I'd like to call to order the city council workshop meeting for December 6th. And if we could have a roll call.
Anderson.
Here.
Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncie. Stanton.
Here.
White.
Here.
You have a form.
Um, Mr. Muncie told me he had a work conflict. Do I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Muncie?
Motion to excuse Councilmember Muncie.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Okay. Um, any agenda changes? Uh, guest speakers today? All right, we're moving on to public comment on agenda items only. I don't see anyone in the room. Is there anyone online who would like to speak publicly on agenda items only? Look at that. We are getting through this. All right, so we're going to move right along to discussion items. Six A waterfront moratorium extension. Um, if we wanted to have Ryan come and speak to that.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I might slow your roll now.
Okay.
Hey, it's your meeting, so we don't mind speeding meetings either, so. Um, as all of you, I think, are aware, back in late March, you enacted a temporary waterfront construction and development moratorium in your Water Street South, Water Street North, and Resort zoning districts. And since that time, your Planning Commissioners have been hard at work on the waterfront assessment project, taking a deep dive, looking at the current regulations, studying the area, conducting extensive public engagement. There was two surveys, there was pop-up boards. Uh, and then in August, November, and October, the Planning Commission, with the assistance of David Drossick, our consulting planner, took a look at some different options, finalized some recommendations, and ultimately held a public hearing on the proposed recommendations in November. So they had some initial discussion. There's some kind of some follow-up and further discussion that they wanted to have, so they're going to continue that discussion in December. Uh, when you initially put the moratorium in place, it was going to be good through, I believe, the end of September. At that time, staff approached you and kind of explained and provided a status update to the council that the Planning Commission was still working on the project, making progress, doing their due diligence. Uh, haven't been sitting on this, and nothing's been really even delayed. It's been extensively reviewed. Uh, you extended the moratorium to the end of December. Planning Commission's close, but not quite ready to give you that recommendation by the end of, well, perhaps they'll have a recommendation by the end of December, but after they make their recommendation, then you get a chance to pick it up, review, and then decide where to go from there. So staff's recommending that you extend the moratorium, at least through the end of March. The caveat that if the new regulations, if any, are in place before then, that the moratorium could be ended at that point in time.
Um, does anybody have any questions about this? I know I have a few specific ones, but go ahead.
I'm sorry, yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so quickly, so the moratorium would be extended to March 3rd, which would mean that the city's work would have to be complete by then. Is there, correct, so?
Unless the moratorium were to be extended, although I think from a staff perspective, I think we really want to aim for that date ultimately. That'll be about a year that the moratorium had been in place, and we probably want to stay from going beyond that point.
I just want to make sure that the Planning Commission is going to allow us ample time. What I don't want to do is get it at, you know, the March 17th meeting, you know, or something like that.
Yeah, certainly.
Um, so you think that the Planning Commission is on track to have it to us by the end of December?
From the discussions with the Planning Commission Chair, I think, you know, we had some discussions about, and perhaps they can make a recommendation in December, maybe January, but, you know, even one of those two months would allow you, with you guys having two meetings a month, to have some discussion, certainly, well before the end of the moratorium.
It'd be nice to be able to have a discussion plus another planning meeting should then, so then if we could get it by no later than the end of January, I would advocate that that would be the, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, so I know we've had some discussions about maybe doing something where there's more of a side-by-side comparison, previous ordinances, changes to the ordinances, so it's a little bit clearer for the public and for those along the waterfront that will be affected by this, to just have that. Is that something we'll be seeing?
So, uh, yeah, so the, that should be complete. It's not done yet, probably tomorrow. I have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Drossick and the Planning Commission Chair, but yeah, so we're working on a kind of a side-by-side, easy-to-read document of the proposed changes, and so that'll be available certainly to the Planning Commission, certainly available to you as a council and any member of the general public through those meeting packets and on our website.
Okay, so will it be something that you put in the packet for the December 21st Planning Commission meeting, or will we see it before then?
Certainly will be in the December Planning Commission packet, which, um, well, it was going to go out in a couple of weeks. We certainly will be available to anybody that would like to view it beforehand. If there's a desire to have it available somewhere before then, we certainly could.
Right.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Just as your former Planning Commission representative from the city council, I just wanted two things. One is to emphasize that the Planning Commission was making great progress on this and was very much in tune with getting this done by the end of the year, but because of some community feedback and some, we had a lot of people at the last meeting, that was, uh, that's the decision to table it, was to take that into consideration. I could see Holly and I, she was at the same meeting with me. So, uh, the Planning Commission has worked really hard on this, and, and so it's not as a result of a lack of effort that, the extension. And number two is I would always encourage anybody on city council, historic district commission, I, whatever, wherever, attend the meetings, listen to the conversation. That's where the, that's where the nuts and bolts of this really comes out. And the document, which you're talking about, which is something that we've seen at the Planning Commission, will be helpful to those that are maybe not at those meetings, but make the time, go listen. I think it's an opportunity to become impressed with the level of professionalism and experience that these commissions bring to the city. Um, and I'm very proud to have served with that Planning Commission and will be looking with interest on how this progress is made. So just a chance for me to kind of cheerlead for that group, as well as to encourage you to attend those meetings.
Yeah, excellent points, Mr. Gardner. Definitely agree. A lot of work's been put in over several months. We've done a lot of community engagement on this over several months, and you all taking a deep dive, so.
Anyone else? All right, Ryan, thank you. Um, now on to six B, short-term rental enforcement. What problem are we trying to solve? Discussion. This is on page six. I know we've all read this, but, um, Ryan, if you want to continue.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, well, as you know, you had a short-term rental task force that worked for several months and also did a deep dive into your short-term rental regulations and, uh, ultimately came up with a lengthy report and some really good recommendations. And so those recommendations were presented to the Planning Commission formally back in October, and then to you as a council in early November. The Planning Commission began a discussion at their last meeting. And, and part of that will relate to our next discussion, but a lot of the recommendations that the task force made were related to enforcement. And that's no surprise in the sense that a lot of the public feedback that we heard in the surveys that were done and the town hall that was held, and the public comments throughout the, over several months of meetings, a lot of folks either wanted to see increased or better enforcement. And so, um, from a staff perspective, we wanted to kind of have this discussion with city council today and kind of ask you some questions, so that way we have a little bit of policy direction from you on what you're expecting to see from enforcement ultimately. And, and as we kind of develop that and bring that back to you. But before we kind of dive into the questions, I wanted to provide you just with a little bit of further detail and background. This is kind of something very similar that I provided to, um, the Short-Term Rental Task Force several months ago, just to kind of explain some of the, you know, how enforcement has worked, at least historically, so you have that as some context and framework going forward. So, next slide, Jamie. So one of the big, uh, common concerns that was raised was about the amount of noise that's created from, from some short-term rental units in certain neighborhoods, perhaps throughout the city. And so ultimately, noise-related complaints are something that's handled by the Sheriff's Department. And typically, and that makes sense, right? Because when the noise is occurring, is when they ultimately should be the ones that are going out and addressing the concern that arises. Um, and so, uh, we kind of did a little bit of an analysis, just kind of say, you know, okay, how many noise complaints has the Sheriff's Department investigated over the last few years? And how many of those were at least on properties that had a short-term rental? Uh, knowing that we may not know exactly if it was short-term rentals that were there at the time, or maybe the actual property owner happened to be there at the time, but at least a property that had a short-term rental on it. And so you can kind of see that data there. Um, and that is for noise complaints, um, that actually had a complainant. So if it was an anonymous caller, that's not something that they may log a formal complaint number for in track. Um, and we'll kind of get into some of those nuances here in a second. So, so what the Sheriff's Department told us is essentially that when they do get noise complaints and they're called to a home, they have a complainant, they're getting, uh, good voluntary compliance when they're knocking on somebody's door, which is good, right? So we're not seeing a, uh, a mentality from renters of trying to ignore what the Sheriff's Department is asking them to do. They're getting compliance, and the Sheriff's Department really kind of stressed that the renters seem to be really worried about being kicked out of that short-term rental. So Captain Ennsfield really recommended that there be, you know, good, strong contracts from the property owners who are renting the properties, to where if there are complaints or there are issues that they could say, hey, you know, you're out of here. We're not going to tolerate that, perhaps, in the community. He had also, you know, suggested that, hey, some of this kind of comes down to being good neighbors, one informing the, those that are renting the property, but also, you know, property owners sharing their contact information with neighbors, so that way if there are issues, that those neighbors could directly reach out to them and they could work on addressing those particular noise issues. So some of the challenges that the Sheriff's Department has in really enforcing noise-related issues is a lot of times the complaints are anonymous. So somebody isn't willing to actually be an official complainant. And that creates a lot of issues because the officers themselves can't be a complainant. So if they're actually going to write a citation or take something to court, the courts have wanted somebody other than the officer to be the actual complainant, somebody who's willing to come and testify and provide witness to the actual noise and disturbance issue that they were facing. So when we have a situation where we have anonymous callers and we really don't have a complainant, they have a very difficult time trying to actually enforce those noise-related issues. Uh, the other thing that Captain Enfield kind of-
Could we recognize a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, can the complainant be the city?
Well, I think I, you know-
What my logic is, if there was a way to, you know, contact a hotline with the city or to a city enforcement person, if that person could then contact the sheriffs and get better compliance, and then the city is the complainant as well.
I think that's probably more of a-
I didn't, sorry.
No, that's a good question.
I can.
Yeah.
Specifically speak to, like, what the county sheriff's department's enforcement procedures are? I do know, like, I've worked with other municipalities, that they enforce their own noise ordinances. It's not something that goes through a sheriff's department. I think probably what the Sheriff's Department in this instance is looking for is like RC kind of alluded to. They're looking for someone who can show up and be a witness. And so I think if someone from the city is present and observes the noise, then sure, they could be a complainant. I don't see any reason why that wouldn't work. I think the problem you run into is that a lot of the time, these noise issues are going to be late at night, and there's not going to be, you know, necessarily city staff available to go out to a location and then assist in kind of the prosecution process.
Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I did ride along with the deputies back in, I think, July, and so I'm one, I was involved with, well, the 23 stats aren't there, but I was in the car when there was a noise complaint up on Grand Street. We actually walked up there. By the time we got there, it was dead, dead quiet. I don't know if it was anonymous call or not, but that, it seems, is probably the experience too, is that a complaint's made, someone may identify themselves, the officer gets there, and the noise is gone. So, you know, that's, that's one of the challenges with this too, is, you know, trying to enforce it. And this, this is an age-old issue in Saginaw. It used to be cars driving down Main Street with their stereos blasting. Remember, the previous experiences, we get a, we had a decibel meter, we'd measure that, it was just, it, you know, bufflers, I mean, you name it. So this is, I put that kind of in the same camp. I appreciate the discussion, but I think it's a hard nut to crack, um, to really get good enforcement, at least based on my experience.
Well, if I, if I may-
Go ahead.
The other thing that, when you see that the total complaint's 22, so good decent people don't typically want to call the sheriff on a noise. I mean, I can tell you, I have had 22 complaints myself just this summer that I don't call the sheriff. I mean, if it's bad enough, if it's loud enough, I walk down, I don't need no stinking sheriff. I'll walk down there myself and have a little conversation with the bachelorettes. But, um, so, so I think that when we look at these numbers, they're just, they're really misleading, because most people are not going to call. They're just going to be annoyed. They'll talk to the homeowner the next time they see him, or, you know, something like that. So I really don't love when we get those kind of, anyway, and we don't need to-
So as far as city staff guidance from us on this issue, I feel like if there was a database of where we could call the rental agency or the homeowner to make those calls, maybe residents would feel more comfortable with that. Maybe they wouldn't. Maybe they still wouldn't call, because they just don't want to have to do that. I know I've called rental agencies and felt comfortable doing that. I wouldn't call the Sheriff's Department on a noise complaint, just because I just don't, it's not a dangerous thing, it's just an annoying thing. And if, as a, as a council, do we feel that if there was a database or something of that nature that gave us more options than just the Sheriff's Department, would we feel, is that something you think could help this issue we're trying to solve?
Madam Mayor, I think that the solution really is in communication and making the rules known to the renters on a consistent basis, whether it's a sign in the house, whether that's a pamphlet or something. I know of other communities that do that, that actually they enforce this by giving information to renters to say, okay, here are the rules, good neighbor policy, whatever you want to call it. Here are the rules that you, as a renter, are expected to follow, right? Like bars put signs saying, when you walk out, you walk out into your neighborhood. That to me is kind of, that to me is the one way to look at a solution to it, and there's multiple things that would be talking about trash and other things that, in my mind, we're not consistently communicating to renters on what our expectations as a community of them are when they visit.
Uh, I mean, I guess my response to that would be, if we're going to do any of this, any ordinances, changes to ordinance, they have to have teeth.
Yes, right.
I mean, you could have a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign. Everybody's been communicated to that they're expected to go 25 miles per hour, but if they know there's no cops around.
Yeah, I, I think communication, I mean, I think that would at least help, and, you know, maybe if everyone got the same communication, but I don't, that's not going to stop a lot of the situations. It might stop some, but, um, you know, a little alcohol and party and high spirits at 1:00 AM.
I mean, I think, you know, we're going to do this, you know, and I get, I get that the Sheriff's Department, I mean, that's a, frankly, that's a waste of their time.
Yeah, right.
But if we're not, we don't have a person or a means of going to a short-term rental operator and say, over the past seven days, this has happened three times, you know, and we've documented it, now you're going to be fined.
Well, I think that one of the recommendations was good about, you know, having enforcement, having a non, you know, emergency line that you can call, register it, and then we're going to start, you know, and then tracking them in that, and then the teeth can be into the, I don't think, me personally, I think the teeth needs to go into the investor, like, mind your company, you know what I mean? It's not up to the residents to tell on people. It's not up to us to police your short-term rentals. The investors need to make sure that they, that they've got it sorted. So you're getting, you know, have, you know, the first complaint is X dollars, the second complaint is this, third complaint is we pull your license, something like that, something that there's teeth in it, and it has to be something where it doesn't have to be a sheriff getting involved. That'd be mine.
So at this point, do we want to have Ryan continue with more on the problems we're trying to solve?
Because we can do this on every one of them.
We're going to do this with everyone, but this is why we have these workshops, so we can have these discussions.
And Madam Mayor.
Yeah, and Holly and I spent a whole summer on this, so we've heard these conversations quite a few times.
Mr. Gardner has. Yeah, just bullet point, ordinances are old and equated broad. So were those actually studied by the Short-Term Rental Task Force, or is that just a comment based on?
All right, so what I, what I'm saying is, I'm saying this is, this is feedback from the sheriff's office. So this is the challenge that they've had in enforcing noise, is that the ordinances are older and they're broad. And now you did warn that we don't want to get to the point of having, like, decibel meters. That's probably not the way to go, but that there perhaps were some improvements that we can make, and I think legal counsel has identified, you know, and looking at some of our ordinances as well, that perhaps there's some things that we could tighten up based on, you know, some case law that's now out there to make noise enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
If it's okay, we can have Ryan continue then.
Yep.
Okay.
And just two more points on noise real quick, you know. Who should receive the citation has been a challenge for them, you know. The person that answers may not be the person that's actually renting the home and trying to figure out who's actually responsible, and should be the person to receive a citation. And something to be thinking about as we go along here too is, you know, um, you know, the pushback others would say is simply having a complaint that's not verified, maybe is not necessarily fair to a rental owner as well. What's the due process here? Is it simply a complaint? Is it a verified complaint? But then who's it going to be verified by and those sorts of things, so? And that loud noise is subjective. So the point to Mr., that Mr. Gardner indicated, you know, maybe somebody quiets down. Captain Ennsfield had mentioned that the courts have had issue with, maybe it's a neighbor two houses down, but the neighbor in between didn't call. And so the courts have said, well, if it's not bothering the immediate neighbor, how is this really a true nuisance that we should enforce, right? Um, or maybe there's multiple homes that are loud, and maybe only one got called on, and so, you know, how do we, you know, so there's a lot of nuances there and challenges as it relates to noise issues, so. Next piece is, this is kind of this historical information. So back in 2021, this council, or previous council, passed a short-term rental investigation fee policy, which kind of outlined the process that staff are supposed to use. If we come across a unit that is not registered, the process that we're supposed to go through to bring them into compliance. And a lot of it relates to, um, you know, education, you know, trying to bring voluntary compliance, you know, reaching out to that property owner. If they don't respond, sending a more formal notice, and then from there actually assessing some sort of investigation fee if they're not responsive to the notices that they're receiving from the city on up to citations and going to court to gain compliance. So following this policy being implemented in 2022, I didn't bring it, I pulled it out, but I didn't bring it in here. The staff at the time actually did go through and kind of searched through a number of websites, and actually I created this booklet where they identified a number of unregistered rentals, reached out to them to actually get them registered, and did have a lot, I think, a lot of success with that, um, that program. So perhaps there's better ways to do that than simply scouring websites and trying to figure out what their address is, because that's not always easy either with the sites that are out there, and we can talk about some of those ideas. So this year, I, since I've been with the city, have focused on, we had a lot of short-term rentals, certificates that had a hold status for various reasons. A lot of it was because they didn't have inspections or were on hold from the pandemic. And so we did a lot of cleanup this year, and I think we've got that cleanup done. I've done a lot of trying proactive work. If I see that a short-term rental is going to be expiring in the next couple of months, I try to send out letters to those property owners, say, hey, your short-term rental is going to be expiring soon. So that way we don't have situations where we're trying to follow up on expired certificates, try to keep everybody valid and continued that want to. Uh, and then as we've received complaints, or as I've come across issues with unregistered rentals or rentals not being rented in accordance with our zoning requires. So we have investigated those, we have followed up on those, we have issued citations in certain cases, and then, and I'll talk about some of those challenges here in a second as well. So just for your knowledge, next slide is kind of shows if we were to actually issue citations or civil infraction notices, what the actual, um, fine amounts are for, for first, second, and third violation. So to give you some, uh, some context here, like a nuisance would be like a noise complaint. So you're talking about a $25 ticket in that situation. If you're an unregistered rental and, you know, have a red, a short-term rental certificate, that's a zoning violation currently, and the fine for that would be $100 if you were to write a citation. So perhaps the violation fees maybe aren't commensurate with, um, you know, the actual, uh, where they should be. So something that we can take a look at as well. And then, next slide, this is kind of on some overall enforcement challenges and some things to think about as well. So one of the recommendations from the task force was related to occupancy of short-term rental, um, units. And a lot of that relates to fire safety and not cramming too many people into a short-term rental unit and trying to get people out in case of a fire. There are some challenges with enforcing that. Something to think about would be sleeping occupancy versus visitor occupancy. So the occupancy that's set is who is allowed to sleep there at night. But short-term rental owners, or I'm sorry, short-term renters tend to travel as groups, and maybe they are, you know, like, hey, you know, this is going to be the spot where we kind of gather around the pool or, you know, do our grilling. And so you may see a lot more short-term renters at the home than what the occupancy limit actually allows for, and that's not necessarily a violation. So that can be a little bit difficult to enforce. Resources for more time-intensive proactive enforcement, so, you know, regularly checking listing sites, you know, it's more, you know, it takes resources and staff time to do those things, you know, trying to enforce the single contract provision. So, you know, your, your, uh, single-family dwelling and an accessory dwelling unit has to be rented together under a single contract. It can take a lot of tracking to try to make sure that that's occurring. And so we, we do have some clues and things that we can use to figure out when that's not occurring, and there's some additional tools available out there at some cost. But it would, it would take some extra resources to do that. Legal fees. So I can tell you, most of the short-term rentals that I've encountered this summer where there's been enforcement-related or enforcement action taken in some way has resulted in, I'm getting my attorney, which results in the city saying, well, here's our attorney, and then, um, that, that's a cost to the city. Um, and then if we have situations where we have to take a citation to court to try to ask the court to prove our case, that's very costly to actually have a formal hearing with the courts as well. I think we're looking at around $5,000 to do that, um, so in that ballpark, depending on the complexity. So as we have enforcement, there's, there's, there's costs, and when we, when we have people that may disagree with our enforcement action, which is the due process that they have a right to, there are going to be some legal costs, legal fee costs related to those items too. We talked about noise. Street parking was kind of something that some folks thought maybe we had a way to, you know, prevent short-term renters from parking on the streets, but that's really a challenging thing from a enforcement perspective to say that, well, this person's visiting and they can park there, but I think this person's a short-term runner. I mean, I mean, I can think of ways to, to implement something like that, but I think from an enforcement standpoint, it would be pretty resource-intensive, so, but that-
I'm sorry, can I ask one quick question? Does the city have the unilateral ability to decide that, for example, there's no overnight parking on streets?
They're your streets, and you do have certain rules on the books for different parts of the year, for different reasons, so yes.
I can see why that would be. Okay.
So I mean, conceivably, if the city wanted, you know, a short-term rental, once it was, the number of units were established, they could be issued overnight parking passes that they could give to their guests or not.
You don't rent out to anybody who can't park in the parking that you have provided, and there's no overnight street parking?
Well, I mean, I know there are some that don't even have garages or driveways, so there's that issue.
Maybe they should build a garage or a driveway and get rid of the extra bedding that they put instead of it.
Yeah.
Because I think I know exactly how you're talking.
Oh, I know what you mean, but in reality, there are some cottages here that are just simply tiny, that are behind-
But it's a fire hazard too, so anyway, okay.
Anything you wanted to say in regards to that?
Madam Mayor, this is a very challenging issue when you go to look into enforcing parking. One of the most challenging parts from the city's standpoint is that police officers, if somebody's renting a house and they're having a get-together or whatever, you know, those parties can go on all night, right? So how can you judge, like, like? So the way to do it, which we did in Wisconsin for short-term rentals, is like, if you build a new short-term rental, then you have to have a certain number of parking spaces on your property. These are new builds, but to enforce that, again, if you're like having a party, like, how do you really know who's staying there and who is not staying there? So it's a very, very, very difficult thing to enforce.
With, um, you know, not wanting people to drink and drive too. I would rather have them keep their car there and get a taxi home or whatever.
But you can do it through zoning, and as far as the number of, like, rooms versus parking spaces on your lot. But enforcement, as far as police enforcement, that gets really tricky. Madam Mayor, as an example of this, I was going to do this in council comments, but now's an appropriate time to do it. So there's a new building going up on Mason Street in the old Corbless Taylor property lot, St. Joseph and Mason. And this came to planning commission, I think, a couple of years ago. That's a bed and breakfast, correct?
Correct.
And it's got how many units, do you remember?
Uh, six.
Six, okay. So there's an example of a building that's going up where it was a single-family home and now a six-unit bed and breakfast with absolutely no off-street parking.
Well, it will have some off-street parking, but not enough, well, there's three, yes.
So the-
Not enough for six units.
Right, so the point I'm making though is that the problem exists, right? You've got all the things you're talking about, short-term rentals, you got a bed and breakfast, who is not required to provide that parking? I can imagine the neighbors down there are saying, and there's two bed and breakfasts down there, and probably a short-term rental or two, but there's also some full-time residents that are like, hey, wait a minute. You're creating a problem that doesn't have a solution, because all of a sudden you're going to have, you know, count the cars. That's what's come out of this for me is, okay, the short-term rentals, which I support, have created this additional parking problem, because it's just brought more cars to town that we just don't have space for. And that's an example. It's completely legit, it's legal, but that's an example where problems are going to be created by this going forward, and I don't know what the solution looks like, honestly.
I mean, I've, I've stayed at rentals, I was at a wedding down in- I mean, I, I've stayed at rentals. I was, I was at a wedding down in Miller Beach this summer. And it was a beach house that was the sort of site for the wedding, beach wedding. People were staying there. Uh, but it was limited on parking and people were required to park their vehicles off-site and then get shuttled, to the wedding venue. It's, you know, with the exception of like the caterer and, you know, the bride and groom's family. I mean, you know, it, it can be done. You just need to, structure it in such a way, you know, it can be done.
Yeah, through planning and zoning. Um, so. And the, 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 the option is to institute new rules. When you are filing for a short-term rental, to make sure you have an adequate amount of parking onsite. If not, I, to Mr. Dean's point, um, you, you can find another way to get to the, to the spot. It's, it's, it's a tricky one to enforce right now.
Yeah.
It's not funny, but we are. And we are working on, you know, so, so, so the major concerns, right? Outside of like the good neighbor policies are ones with, um, health, health, li- life and safety, right? With the fire department and making sure they can get down roads safely. And so I, we're, city is already starting to work on that. So I think that's a good first step.
Okay.
It, it's so, the, an issue though is in neighborhoods, especially like the hill where, you know, it can be up to forty percent short-term rentals. Um, you know, it is an issue. I mean, it is an issue already. And when we get, I mean, we, absolutely have to get fire trucks down the streets, but it's like, wow, then where are those cars going to go? Um, so yeah, it's a, it's a challenge.
I mean, unfortunately, it might have to be a very blunt instrument like, uh, no overnight parking unless you've got a sticker, you know, uh, uh.
A residential sticker. Yeah.
I mean, that's how unfortunately, I mean, I don't, we're not a big city, but that's how the big cities.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
So if you were a resident in town, you're suggesting you would have like some sort of sticker and you're allowed to park on the streets.
To become Chicago, but I mean, you know, uh, with this issue, uh, what, what is the solution? And then, you know, I, I mean, we could discuss it more, but you know, uh, you know, if, if a rental is really hamstrung because it was like an old, you know, summer place that, you know, never had a garage, you know, uh, they might get, you know, a sticker that they can, this, put the thing in vehicle tonight.
And we would keep it more in the residential areas, but in the business district, say Water Street, Butler Street. So if somebody doesn't want to drive home from Wally's, they can keep their car on Butler Street. This is what I'm asking.
Yeah, well, that, that would be an option. That would certainly be an option. I mean.
Yeah. The problem with that is it allows the short-term rental people to park on the street, but doesn't allow people who are visiting the town to park on the street, which is kind of, not, uh, not the thing I think we're trying to do.
Right.
So.
The other thing we might consider is, um, as short-term rental licenses come up, if somebody sells the little cottage that doesn't have parking, that, if, for going forward, if you don't have parking, you don't have a short-term rental license. It would take a while to get that, but I think attrition, changing our licensing requirements. Um, so that when you re, when the house, when the property is sold or changes ownership, then you have to meet the requirements. And if we were to do, and I know we're not on this topic yet, but if we were to consider doing caps, on, in the residences, so that we would get neighborhoods back. Um, again, you know, you could do it through attrition. So, um, there wouldn't be a dramatic change, but over time as those houses are sold, you can't get a short-term license until you get the new issues. So I, I think, looking at it that way, it mean, it would take a lot more time. Um, but I think that would help actually solve the problem.
That's a good point.
It is. Madam Mayor, and I would say I, I see this as a multi-solution, um, aspect because of the different things that the community experiences. Permit parking, experienced that in Chicago, not a fan, and I would struggle with that here in Sagatuck. Um, but, everything's open for discussion. I think on, the other thing that I've noticed too, and it's kind of tied in with the safety issues that, I walk the town quite a bit with people and there's a lot of areas in town that people have purposely put things. We've talked about this at council, put blocks, to not allow people to park in the public right-of-way. So essentially taking away spots from, from areas that people could be parking. Um, that is something that the council's discussed and I think we need to address to make sure that we at least can use all of the available right-of-way for parking that's safe. And I think there's areas for opportunity there.
Yeah. So, yeah, the hard escaping, uh, and objects, uh, within the, the right-of-way that should be coming to you next month. That's, that's pretty close to being, pretty ready. So for the council, if it's all right, Madam Mayor, does staff's looking just kind of for some feedback on, on the, on the four questions. They're not limited to these. You can, you could, but, and, and any of the topics that we're trying to solve for or, or items that you would like to see enforcement focus on, doesn't have to be, limited to what I, I brought up in the presentation. I was just providing background. So we just want some, some, uh, policy direction from you on what you're expecting to see from, uh, an enforcement standpoint as we put something together.
Madam Mayor, in fact, could jump in on Mr. Gardner's point. Some business owners do place orange cones, in front of their busi- business establishments. I, I, staff would really appreciate council's support to enforce, the rules in place that you can't just place cones to block out spots.
Okay.
Wherever they exist.
Do we have council support for that?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know why you would need it, but sure.
No, it, it happens and I could name names, but, um, I could name names up and down.
No, I believe that it happens. I don't know why you would need counsel to say, yeah.
In this discussion of Chicago tra- uh, traditions, now we, we, we shouldn't have people putting chairs out and they're.
Dibs are not a subject to this.
Dibs.
Is there anything else that we need to talk about as far as problems needing to be solved? Um, you know, we talk about noise, garbage.
But, yeah, I, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I, there, there's a real easy piece of low-hanging fruit that we can move on quickly, would be to renegotiate the contract with recycling firm to do twice a month recycling. Uh, that was identified and it would be.
I agree.
It would be very popular, I believe, with everybody on.
When does that contract come up, Ryan?
Um, let me check on that for you.
Thank you.
And I, and I also noticed of one of the recommendations where if you have a, a, a house that you're advertising sleeps eight and it, and it's allowed to sleep eight or whatever, you're going to need two bins and you're going to have to pay like, for example, I pay extra because right now we only have once a month recycle bin. Um, we go through a little bit more recycling than that at my house. So I have two bins, that I can take out there right now. If you go through more trash and you're leasing it out to twelve people at a time, you do. And I see them, they've got trash out there that I just know. I mean, the raccoons are going to be in there in ten minutes, right? And they're just hanging out the sides and all that. So, I thought that that was other, other good recommendation that if you've got something that's more than a four-person, whatever, then you're going to have to get extra bins.
I think we've all heard anecdotally that renters have often asked like, what can I do with all my recycling? I mean, because, you know, people don't come here to dry out or to, you know, they create a lot of recyclables. So.
So that's, that would be my question for Ryan then. If, um, if we have some suggestions on garbage and recycling, um, i- is that something that will be in the application for short-term rentals? And is that something, uh, that planning commission has to change? Or is that something that we can advise you that that is our, we're wanting you as the staff member to come to us with a recommendation and we say yes or no to it as a council.
So I, I think some of that's going to depend on your next agenda item and what, uh, items you delegate to the planning commissioner, which items you want, remain with the, the council and, and, and staff.
I, I had a question on that. If we're going to talk about that now, is that, and this is a, a sincere question. So I was looking at this and I thought, as I was going through the recommendations, I'm like, okay, so are we just going to go start ticking them off? Do we accept recommendation one under, you know, trash? Do we do under fire safety? Do we do? So, why would this go back to planning? And I, maybe that's a better question to ask.
Right. And.
You and.
And, and we certainly can get into that now. If, if it's all right, I just want a little bit, if it's all right, it's on this agenda item and certainly good question and what we can discuss that one at length. I think it's a very good one. Um, this on, before we move on from enforcement, what I've heard is that, um, from a noise standpoint, I think there's, I've heard from counselors desire to maybe have a, a database where there's some access to, to, to anybody could look up and say who the, the agent or property owner is. So that way there's, uh, the ability to contact that person directly if they have a concern with noise. Um, or that, you know, uh, concerns related to trash, that increased recycling pickup, um, is something that the council's open to, uh, a- as well as, um, you know, enforcement maybe of, you know, uh, a number of trash receptacles and those sorts of things. Um, that there's some interest in maybe us thinking a little bit more about parking options. Um, others.
Well, yeah, there's one, there's one more I'd like to offer up. Um, I, I may be wrong, but our fee structure looks very weak.
Please, yes.
I mean, some of these, some of these rentals go for five, six thousand dollars for a week. I can't imagine that a twenty-five dollar fine is really going to.
For a hundred dollars.
Even a hundred dollar fine is, is going to really change someone's behavior. So.
Hundred dollars a year for business license. That, the fee structure is.
It's faint. It needs to be completely revamped. In court too, so.
Yeah, exactly. Well, precisely.
I think it might be helpful when we look at the problems, like if we step back a little bit and look at the kind of the categories of problems. Cause there are the nuisances and we've talked a lot about that. I think the administration, which would, you know, how are, how long are the licenses? Um, you know, what are the fees? Are we capturing our costs and the fees? I think a lot of the safety stuff could go into that. Um, so there's a whole bunch of administration part. How are we, you know, tracking the numbers and, um, databases, all that? Um, I think enforcement, which is kind of the flip side of, um, actually both of those. And then I think the fourth one is density. Um, and, you know, do we want to address the issue that in some of our neighborhoods, we have forty percent of our homes as short-term rentals? So I think it's, it's helpful if we kind of think about these in the different categories. And so, it's like, are we capturing all the nuisances? Are we capturing all of the administrative things? So it.
What do you need from us, Ryan, at this point?
I think, you know, I, I, I think I see the areas that you want us to focus on, certainly making sure that, that rentals are, are registered and actually complying with the programs, good neighbor-related policies, enforcement that way. Um, are, is the council open to staff, uh, exploring, um, third-party support, um, or other support? You know, for example, there's, there's, uh, uh, providers out there that can help scour these websites and, and provide us with a list of units that are registered, that, so we can check and see, are they registered or not registered? There's, there are providers that do provide one-eight-hundred numbers that can track, uh, and log complaints and also have the ability to even reach out to the, the property owners or the rental agents when issues are occurring and, and keep logs of those types of things. And then there's some providers that even, you know, are willing to take over your enforcement e- entirely. So, i- is the council open at least in some ways to third-party that comes with some costs? If you're not, then that tells us right now goals and the, the resources that we have. So.
Let's address this. Go ahead, Russ.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm open to that. But I will say that that expense for that, in my opinion, should come from the short-term rental.
Of course, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
I think the expense for all of short-term rentals needs to be covered.
Yeah. And, uh, thank you for bucketing those because that's a very easy way for me to understand and approach. Is, is it a policy that we have to decide on like caps or is it an ordinance or is it a police? Uh, that to me makes sense. And back to that, I would not support hiring anybody. I would support contracting for that service initially to figure out how well it works. Uh, there's companies as, uh, Ryan Cummins mentioned that do this for business and, and they're skilled at this. And so we could, I'm open to exploring that, but the cost for that needs to come from the short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Cause the other, the other thing that I definitely want, one of the, talk about low-hanging fruit is, really capturing costs for what it's taking our city to host these short-term rentals. And I mean, every cost. I mean, insurance, I mean, legal fees. I mean, the parts of your salary that you, what percentage of time are you spending on it? A full study as to what we are, and then that needs to be allocate, not allocated, running piecemeal, but we're going to say we've got, two hundred thousand dollars a year that it costs us to maintain short-term rentals with between trash and da, 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 and all these other extra costs or whatever, whatever it is. And that needs to be applied to people in their business, fire, all of it.
Yep. I, I agree a hundred percent with everything that's been said. And I'm glad you mentioned fire as well because, you know, I think the fire inspections are key and I, I, the fire department should be made, made whole for having to provide that service. And so that should come from the property owners.
And if that's an analysis that Ryan is planning on doing is, or do you need help with that, with that analysis?
We'll circle back. We do, but I, I, I think, you know, at least we have some direction from council that you want us to analyze that a little bit further. And, and I'm hearing that, I see a lot of heads nodding that you want the cost of enforcement and, and, and having short-term rentals in the city passed on to the, the owners of the short-term rentals.
And then as far as it being passed on, is it passed on in a, in, in fees? Or is it passed on with a user tax that, you know, individual people who rent the, short-term rental, they're paying this. And if that's the case, that, you know, needs to be explored, how that.
I think statutorily, it's got to be a fee.
Yeah.
Cannot be a tax. You try to answer that question.
I agree with you there.
It, it, it should be a fee.
Yeah. Cause I'm relying on them to, to tell us how much they're renting.
Be looking at voter approval.
Right.
Application fee, any of the city's like regulatory and administrative costs can be baked into that application. With, with no problem from a legal perspective.
Yeah, thank you.
And just a, just as a comparison, um, other communities do have short-term rental taxes that are like a hotel tax or a bed and breakfast tax. You know, they have that where the short-term rentals are actually paying that as well. And we don't do that. And I'm just wondering, I mean, obviously it would be something that our voters would have to, you know, we would have to vote on something like that, but, um, I just.
And, and Rep. Andrews is working, I know, at, at the state level to get a bill passed. And I, I think you, we, council talked about it before. Part of that is an opt-in tax that we could decide to opt into that would help cover, cause a lot of communities, it's tough. I mean, it's a lot to enforce and, govern. So the state is trying to come up with a, a way that communities can opt in.
Right. Because how much are we even like, when we talk about even capturing, we can't capture how much they're using of the roads that they're, you know, you know, there's a lot that we, that, that we're not going to capture.
Right.
And, and the other thing is the CVB. So if you're a bed and breakfast, you're paying your fees to the CVB, but you're not paying them if you're a short-term renter. Why isn't the CVB capturing anything? There's, you know, so we.
So the CVB does capture it if you own a certain amount of short-term rentals. So if you own like ten short-term rentals, you have to.
Every one of the ones on my street are owned individually. CVB is getting.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I would say from a, from the council member's standpoint, first things first is let's get some hard costs.
Yep.
And that's going to drive the fees.
Yep.
Then the second conversation long-term would be, is that enough to support it? Are we going to, you know, we're not looking to make, this is not a money-making enterprise. This is a covering our cost enterprise.
Right.
So, and maybe the tax is the way to go. And that's more of a statutory, there's a whole lot of stuff that goes along with that. But I think first things first is the direction we've been given. Is let's get some costs.
Yeah. I, I don't disagree with any of this. I guess one thing I would, ask, given the load on staff is, is, is there a part of this that we should split out because it applies to residents and visitors alike? Things like working the recycling contract. So it's twice monthly. You know, we, we started off with a conversation around parking. And indeed, you know, we, we know one of the issues for parking in the summer is business owners, staff park here all day. You know, so it, does it become a discussion on certain districts are no overnight parking? You know, and once again, I know we don't want to be like a big city, but you know, more and more towns are going to, you know, these modern meters.
Mm-hmm. Modern meters. Yeah.
Oh, the, 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 you know, you do it online. It's fairly simple, but once again, requires enforcement, requires teeth. But it is a, then it does become a revenue stream as well. And it does change people's behavior.
I definitely think, you know, that's something we want to talk about is stra- strategic planning.
Yeah.
But in your, in your mind, where we're going with all of this, so you have a good direction is our point of this meeting.
I understand where you're at, what you're asking for and giving us some good, good feedback for us to dig in and, and come back.
Yeah. I would love to see as far as, you know, what we can move forward with. I'd love to see, like Bruce was saying, a breakdown of the hard costs that we're kind of committed to. Um, independent of the volume of the short-term rentals for the next year. Um, and then maybe some optional, you know, small, medium, large type enforcement strategies and what their third-party costs would be on those. Um, so that we could start to take a look at right sizing those, inspect or the, the inspection fees and everything as well. Um, that'd be really great to see.
All right. Can we also talk about timeline on this? When we can expect, and understanding the workload on city staff, um, as to when we can expect to see some preliminary information on this? Trying to leave this as wide open as possible, but.
Madam Mayor, I can help our CEO with this. So we, we've had some discussion about bringing certain things to, back to the strategic planning.
Yeah.
Meeting. So that's going to be our focus. Um, as far as hard data, I mean, really what we need the council to do is, align on what you all really want to do. I mean, this is a good conversation, right? Um, but I think the meat and potatoes conversation as far as staff direction will be at that strategic planning meeting.
Okay.
So.
I thought this was a good discussion though. Great discussion. Yeah.
Yeah. So sorry, Russ. There's like no firm answer on like a timeline.
Brian, do you need anything else from us as far as your direction?
Nope. I've, I've appreciated the, uh, discussion. So, and some of it's going to depend on what ordinance changes you make as well and, and, uh, and that'll, that'll provide some guidance too.
All right. Is there anything else before we move on to the next subject? Okay. So, uh, now we're on to six C, which is police powers ordinance recommendations for short-term rentals. And it was something that Helen had spoke on, but. And it was something that Helen had spoke on, but Ryan, if you could set us up with this.
Yeah, Helen, Helen's on the, on the right track and asking the, the right questions for you to, to kind of wrestle with today. So, you know, essentially, right now, all of your zoning-related, or all of your short-term rental-related regulations are within your zoning ordinance. And so just kind of explain a little bit of what the, the differences are. So zoning typically is going to relate to land use in specific zoning districts. And so something like, you know, in, in the community residential zoning district, which, you know, encompasses the hill, we're willing to allow short-term rentals as a, as a use, or kind of a secondary use. That makes total sense to be in your zoning, and that's, you know, that, that wouldn't change essentially under your zoning. But a lot of things like activities of short-term rentals or the licensing of short-term rentals, those are typically functions that you would see in a police powers or a regulatory type of an ordinance. And so right now, like I said, everything's in, in your zoning ordinance. You can have this three-year certificate process and all these rules and regulations there. And I'll turn over to legal counsel here in a second, but, you know, staff and legal counsel have kind of evaluated it and feel that some of the regulations are probably better for a police powers-related ordinance. So where, some of this comes back to you as a council, that your planning commission has statutory authority to certainly make recommendations on a zoning ordinance. But in the past, the council's all, has deferred to the planning commission to also make recommendations on police powers-related ordinances, especially if there's maybe some overlap or some side-by-side comparisons that, that are occurring, like there is in this case. And so staff's bringing to you as a council, a request to actually allow the planning commission to also make a recommendation related to the police powers ordinances. So they would, wouldn't just look at maybe appropriate zoning districts for short-term rentals. They would, they, even if it wasn't going to be within the zoning ordinance, could still make some recommendations to you as it relates to the activities of short-term rentals. The other option that you, you would have, you don't have to do that. You, as a council, could choose to, you know, take the short-term rental, you know, task force recommendations and direct staff and legal counsel to put together some, some, an ordinance for you to take a look at, and we would bring that to you, and you could workshop that and, and handle it at the council level and, and not wait for a recommendation. So with that, I, I turned it over. Well, actually, if I could, this, legal council, you want to add anything beyond what I?
Sure, and I'm happy to answer specific questions as they come up. But from, kind of like my end and working with RC on dealing with short-term rentals within the city's existing regulatory framework, just one of the other benefits I see from having a police powers ordinance is there's no grandfathering in, there's no non-conforming uses. So a police powers ordinance is really the only vehicle you have to make regulations kind of universally applicable and even retroactive. So with a zoning ordinance, if you decided to make all of your changes to the zoning ordinance and, and, you know, kind of shift the landscape on how short-term rentals would be regulated, that would only apply, at, at least, I guess, the, the city's licensing system within the zoning ordinance, maybe makes it an, an open question. But trying to apply that retroactively to existing short-term rentals would be really complicated. At, at least, and there could even be an argument that none of these changes to the zoning ordinance would apply to short-term rentals that are operating right now, provided they're doing so lawfully. And so I, I've worked with several communities that have implemented controls on short-term rentals. And the way it, it almost always goes is there are some amendments to the zoning ordinance that deal with, you know, exclusively land use type concerns with short-term rentals, where they can be located. Maybe like if there are district-specific requirements, such as parking or spacing, so on and so forth, that would be in the zoning ordinance. But then most of the universally applicable regulations pertaining to licensing, noise, occupancy, so on and so forth, would be in a police power ordinance. So happy to answer any questions on that, if there are.
That makes sense. I mean, it makes sense to me.
Yeah, if I may say that, that does make sense then to, to this question that I had then. So to me, and, and I do want to hear from Member Anderson's opinion on this. But to me, that would mean that we would seek the council, council, we would seek the advice from planning when it comes to zoning and that, but for police power, I don't see any reason why council wouldn't just take that on at this point. But I would like to know how planning feels about it.
I'm going to ask, answer your question with a question to RC. Have you talked with the planning commission chair to get his take on the planning commission's expectation for involvement?
Yes, so didn't meet with the, the planning commission chair and, and, and discuss that this would be brought forth to the council. I mean, essentially, I think the planning commission chair is, is open to making recommendations on both. Certainly would like some staff guidance on, you know, or recommendations on which may be better for police powers versus, versus zoning. But I think the planning commission chair saw them reviewing everything and making a recommendation on both, he felt was, you know, appropriate for the planning commission, if the council's willing to delegate that, that authority, so.
If would what I'm hearing though from legal counsel, what I'm hearing, so you can make sure that I understand this correctly, if you would, is that you see planning as taking care of the zoning in the land use areas and council to do.
My discussion was relative to what should be in a zoning ordinance versus what should be in a police power or regulatory ordinance. I don't necessarily see, like, although the, the planning commission's purview is normally zoning and planning type stuff, I, I personally don't have any problem with the planning commission kind of developing both the police power ordinance and the zoning amendment in tandem. I, I think regardless of which body develops the police power ordinance, if that's the, the way the city wants to go, there needs to be coordination between that and the changes to the zoning ordinance. Because they're, they're addressing the same issues. Some things are going to be left to the zoning ordinance, some are going to be moved to a police powers ordinance.
My concern here is timing. Yeah, I, 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 I mean, I think, yeah, I, but yes, I agree. I mean, and I, I'm really glad we're spending so much time on this now, because it feels like there's momentum again. I do think, though, the planning commission expects to have an opportunity to, I mean, the planning commission has not yet had a discussion like this. I mean, we've had very, you know, high level, but we haven't. I think we've talked in more depth, and RC, correct me if you disagree, but I, I don't think we've gone into this depth. And my sense is, or Russ, you too, that they would like the opportunity to have voice. So I think, and, and I know one thing that, that had been discussed is, do we want to have some sort of joint workshop where planning has a voice? Because this was one of the plannings, I mean, we had two priorities for this year, short-term rentals and waterfront. So I think it would be, I think there would be pushback from planning commissioners. Now, I mean, council obviously can still decide to, to go forward, but I, I do think there would be pushback.
Is there anything that council could take off from planning commission's plate that would be easy recommendations that wouldn't require? Is there anything that you guys could say?
I think the first one is us directing staff to.
Right, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it seems like if we can kind of keep the momentum going and with the, with the strategic planning workshop, which is the day after the next planning commission meeting. But I think.
Day before, right?
So is this on the planning commission's agenda, though?
Strategic planning is the twentieth and planning is the twenty-first.
Oh, it's the twenty-first, right. It's not the nineteenth, which is what I thought.
Yeah.
And let's be on their agenda, then, to look at short-term rentals? What I don't want to do is get it delayed a month, and then we're into January, next we're into spring, and.
I understand.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, so the, the chair, yeah, plans on this being a, a discussion item, staff does as well at the next planning commission meeting. My understanding from the last planning commission meeting was, though, that they wanted some feedback or direction from council. If the council's not interested in the planning commission looking at, or making a recommendation on police powers-related ordinances, and there's agreement that a lot of these things should be in a police powers ordinance, then that tells planning commission to only focus on certain items. If the council's okay with the planning commission looking at both, that allows the planning commission to continue their work and discussion on all of those items to make a recommendation to you on what they feel, you know, should be implemented.
Thank you, Mayor. From my experience, what the planning commission was mostly concerned about was having recommendations brought to council and council, disregarding those or making substantial changes to those recommendations, without considering where the planning commission had done their work and brought that to the table. From a policing versus zoning ordinance standpoint, as a former planning commissioner, as a city council member, I don't have any issue at all with separating those two. And I think that the planning commission, as well as maybe any other resident, would say, it is council's responsibility to make policy. Because ultimately, that's what drives this, and then the ordinance supports it. So I'm, I'm, I'm behind this, so is that?
Yeah, I'm, I am fine with that, too. I, I think it would be helpful at some point in the deliberation process for council to hear planning's perspective.
I would agree with that. I, I, I would like to know planning's perspective. I just don't want it to be too late.
I am, I'm totally, I share your urgency and maybe even more so. So I, I do want us to, to get through this, and I do worry, it's like, oh, my God, it'll be, you know, March before. And I mean, I don't want to be a year after talking about the task force and not having done anything. I think that would not be good. But I do think if we could sort of work in parallel or, you know, continue all of this, but, but maybe we do have a joint workshop that planning can prep for to. I don't, I, it, it'd be worth a conversation with Steve.
Yeah, how does that even work? Does that?
I don't know where that falls, if, you know, as far as the next planning commission meeting is December twenty-first. What are you hoping to get accomplished at that meeting? And then when is the next workshop that we would?
Yeah, and what, what complicates all of this is we also have waterfront development. And I know that is really hot in, in December, too. So, I mean, I, I don't, I am all for getting this, I mean, it's not like we're going to have all of the police powers ordinances developed, you know, in two weeks or a month, I'm assuming. I, I mean, I don't know how long this process takes from the staff and legal perspective. If there is an opportunity for us to, because some of this stuff is no-brainer. I, I would think, but.
Anyone, anyone else?
I just think, based on what I've heard from our two former and current members of the planning commission, what I've heard from council, what I've heard from RC, I, I'm going to support this on Monday or at our next council meeting. I just think, I, I, you know, this is sensitive stuff. There's, you know, there, there will be perceived winners and perceived losers. The more people are involved, the more people can participate in these meetings, I think the better. I think everyone understands the urgency around this. I mean, you'll hear more from me later this month, but this is a top priority for the next year or so. I mean, I'm, I'm personally not looking forward to it slowing down at all, but I do want to make sure that everybody's involved in the decision-making. And like we discussed earlier, there, there are some things that planning, I can just tell right now, you know, if, if we want to work the recycling thing, they're not going to care.
Right.
There's low-hanging fruit that we can immediately action, which the community will be thrilled about, I think, so.
Okay.
I'm going to support it.
Yeah, staff certainly, and no matter, you want, even what's existing, you know, enhanced enforcement, right? So certainly, we're going to be working on that in tandem, exactly like, like Mr. Dean said. And so I think what I heard from the planning commission chair, too, in our, our last meeting and talking with him, was that it may be a situation where if they're able to make a recommendation on the police powers, most of this is probably straightforward, and they can make a recommendation fairly quickly. If it's making a recommendation on something like residential caps, that's going to take more time. And so maybe they just make a recommendation on what they have some agreement on upfront, and they can do that quickly and, and.
That would be, to me, that, so you said the C word, and I'm glad you did, because that's something that we're going to have to get into. But what I would like us to do is be able to get some, our arms around, sorry, get our arms around. The ordinance is a police power, the things that we can take care of, and then we can talk about caps. Because caps is going to be a whole deal. I mean, short-term rental task force spent months on it, never touched it or, or agreed. It's not that they didn't touch it, but they agreed that they weren't going to talk about it at the end.
Disagree.
They agreed to disagree. And I, the thing is, I don't think most of our residents disagree. So that will, I think that the ordinances, we need to get our arms around and get those executed. And that's why, that's why I feel like time is so sensitive. Get that out of the way, get that under control. Most of this stuff, we're not going to have a lot of disagreement on from the residents, council and, and, and planning, I would, I would, I would say. And then that is going to free us up to start talking about caps and what, what the next steps are. And then that is going to be, I'm sure, zoning, who's grandfathered, ba, 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 all these things. And, and ultimately, I think that that's going to have to be something that planning and council comes to, because if we don't, it's going to be on the ballot. So let's get it together on these ordinances.
Ryan, do you need anything else from us as far as direction?
Well, yeah, it'll be up for an official vote on Monday, so that'll be your, your ultimate direction, if you're willing to delegate this police powers portion. And then I think certainly, I think there's, there's some planning commissioners on, you have your, your liaison, and, and we'll make sure to take back the, the planning commission, what your direction is.
And the motion would just be to get their recommendations from planning.
Correct. Yep, and both zoning and police powers. Yeah, yep.
We're, we're not giving any authority.
Okay.
Other than just bringing them into the conversation.
As long as we can do it with alacrity, I will support it.
Any other questions or comments before we move on to the next agenda item? All right, thank you. Now on to six D, Blue Star Trail, include previous agreements approached by council along with updated terms and conditions. It's on page thirteen.
Madam Mayor and council, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. Page thirteen, as you mentioned, Blue Star Trail design, so this came up at the last council meeting. There were some questions in as far as the budget allotment for designing really specific elements for the city of Sagatuck. And so city staff will present to you at your Monday meeting, your budget allotment, which I talked to the treasurer. Just so you know, there's two hundred thousand dollars in the Department of Public Works budget, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which have, have, has been spoken for. So you have a sixty thousand dollar budget allotment outside of the agreement that's in your packet to work with for the city of Sagatuck, specific elements for the Blue Star Trail. And I think that was Mr. Gardner's question, is do we have a budget, budget allotment? And then he also wanted a not-to-exceed amount, which I'm working on with C two AE. And also the hourly expenses for the engineering for the city of Sagatuck, specific elements for the Blue Star Trail allotment. So that will come in front of you on, on Monday.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Uh, yeah, so on the, on the table, when city being city of Sagatuck, it, does Douglas pay anything on this?
So Douglas has their own set of expenses, as does the township.
Right.
Right, and so when I say the city of Sagatuck, specific expenses, I'm talking about everything very specifically, the pallet sign.
Right.
The crossing, a, a, across Lake, Lake Street, Blue Star. And then also the bridge elements that go across the bridge. So everyone has to pay their own way for their specific elements within their jurisdiction.
Cool, thanks.
You're welcome.
And do I have this right? You're saying that this, on page fifteen, we have the city's cost dollar share phase two. And there's already eleven thousand dollars that we've already spent, or is that what's been?
So that's, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Just asking, yeah, yeah.
So that's already been committed and agreed to.
Okay.
And so this, so then the additional costs are above and beyond what you see in this agreement. But I did want to just share this agreement with you all.
And you're saying that it's been budgeted for about sixty thousand dollars for what we have left to do?
So, yeah, within your city budget currently, you have sixty thousand dollars to work with.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I, I anticipate probably ten to fifteen thousand dollars for like the city design of like moving the pallet sign and the crossing. You may get into some more cost expenditures, we'll bring that back to city council when we get into the traffic signal that you, you may be looking at, so.
Okay. Is anybody else? Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This is a very complex topic, and we have not had, in my opinion, really good updates recently in terms of, we talked about moving the pallet sign, there's talk about a traffic signal at Blue Star that was discussed a couple of years ago. There was a warrant that was done, it didn't meet the warrants, if I recall correctly, for.
That's incorrect, sir.
So, okay, I stand corrected. It's been a while, as well as design on the bridge. What I like to see from a council and community standpoint is exactly what's been discussed and what's been proposed or is being proposed in terms of moving the pallet sign. That's a hot topic. Lights at Blue Star and Lake, as well as bridge design. Because that, I think, will then drive what the financial commitment from the city is going to be. I know that there's been some commitments from the state in terms of funding. That's, I think, 2025 is when that's expected to come through. I'd like to get a better sense of where we are from a discussion standpoint. And I believe it's under the Parks and Public Works Committee that that discussion has been taking place. I just don't feel I've gotten much information recently about exactly what's being discussed. And I know those are public meetings and I can go and listen, but.
I, I can, I can answer that if you're, but we, it really has not been bubbling up until, like, it's just now getting so.
Great.
I've been on Parks and Public Works and we've, yes.
Okay.
But it's not been getting the attention that it is now that we're moving into second phase. And so that's where we're at with that.
But what the comments made, like moving the pallet sign, sounds to me like there's been some discussion about that. I think that's something that should be brought to council and the community to see exactly what's being discussed. So that's one thing, too, is that the financial commitment, I'm aware of the $50,000 towards the match that the city committed to. But you said that there's a budget line item for parks.
Department of Public Works, TPW.
Not TPW.
The Department of Public Works, TPW.
So I'd have to see those numbers again. I, I want to make sure I'm comfortable with the financial figures here. I don't recall that offhand as being committed specifically for this project. But anyway, it sounds like you've had a conversation with the treasurer. I think it's important to bring this information out and to the public, so we can all understand exactly what's going on from a financial commitment standpoint. As well as been, as well as what's been discussed, so.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's all there. We just need to have it here.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, I, I do appreciate those comments, Mr. Gardner. And, um, so these conversations are taking place with your Parks and Public Works Committee, which are open in, in public meetings. And I would encourage everyone to attend those meetings and pay attention, because these are important discussions. And then, uh, the, 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 the financial allotments will certainly come in front of you. First and foremost, on Monday, for this next section of, of this project.
Any other discussion?
I, I just, I just think, you know, in terms of, you know, once again, rumor control, um, the pallet sign is staying at that intersection. And I've heard nothing to the contrary. And I think what's being talked about is adjusting it a matter of a few feet.
The maximum, I think, on the suggestions was five feet.
Five feet.
Okay.
And once again, and I think, and once again, I think this, this speaks to the need to have this work done quickly. So we can basically future proof that intersection for when we do get a, a traffic signal. So I mean, once again, I think this is a good investment, because it is specific to Sagatuck. It is protecting one of our landmarks, but it's also preparing us for a safer intersection. So I'm, I'm keen to see this continue to move forward quickly.
I'm glad you addressed the, the rumors that are going around, because when you say things like, we're moving the pallet sign, it's a scooch.
Yeah, it's a scooch.
Scooch, if you've listened to any of the meetings.
I'm not sure what scooch means, but.
Yeah. Meeting, they've talked about it in the meeting.
So this most recently came up in the last PPW meeting, where this is the first time that we even saw, saw it with, because this is the next phase with C2AE. And they presented three different, um, as I recall.
Who actually presented it?
See, well, it was, it was written in the contract for C2AE. We just, it was a matter of discussion at the last, so it's available. But of the three suggestions, I think that the biggest move was maybe five feet. It was not big.
So C2AE has been the driver.
The design, the engineering firm.
Okay. So, so again, I make my point about wanting to bring this information to council and the community, so we can kill.
It's there, it's there for everybody.
The rumors. Two is that I want to go back to the original resolution that this council passed back in, um, let's see here, back in, I think it was 20. The resolution to support the joint resolution on behalf of Sagatuck Township, City of Village of Douglas, and the city of Sagatuck to pursue construction of a non-motorized trail segment within each jurisdiction, and you can read it's online. So my question is, is that, um, does that still guide us, or has that sunsetted and we're now forming because we have proposal on the table? I'm just trying to understand kind of the progression of events here.
It's a good question, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
So that, that agreement addresses what I would consider the common elements to the Blue Star Trail. Meaning like the basic engineering, like the really boring stuff, which is still covered under that agreement. What we're talking about, or what's going to be introduced to the council on Monday is the specific design elements for the city of Sagatuck. I hope, I mean, I could use better words for that. Does that make sense to you? Okay. So that, and then also, sorry, just to jump it on the pallet sign. And because I know how sensitive it is, and we've been very, very, very diligent and specific about making sure that that pallet sign stays intact. And there's just a slight shift. It's all going to come back to council. So you get to vote on everything. No, nothing's going to be, um, constructed in a vacuum. You'll get to weigh in on this, the ultimate design for the pallet sign, the crossing and the bridge elements.
Yeah, thank you. And the point that I'm trying to make, though, is that this comes to council sooner rather than later. Because what I don't want to be in a position of is all of a sudden, we're at a workshop meeting like we are today, and there's all of a sudden, there's a motion made to move the pallet sign five feet. And I'm like, wait a minute, we haven't even talked about this, even though I know there's been studies done. That's what I want to avoid.
Sure. Mr. Gardner, and I, how I'd respond to that is, please do pay attention to the Parks and Public Works committee meetings.
And, and I will say that I have a full-time job that does not allow me to be at those meetings on a regular basis, unfortunately. So again, I expect the representative at the Parks and Public Works Committee, now we have Councilman Member Dean, to bring reports to us in terms of what's being discussed.
Right, but you just sat here a minute ago and asked all of us to attend the planning meetings. And all of us have a lot of things going on as well, so I would just respectfully offer that.
Meetings are at seven o'clock on a Thursday night?
Yeah, busy at seven o'clock, and you're busy at 10 o'clock on a Tuesday morning, Russ, so.
And my, and my first act is the representative will be like, I've got a wingspan of about six feet. Five feet is about this. So this is what we're talking about, folks. We're talking about five feet. We're talking about five feet, and it's not going anywhere. And on my watch, it will not leave that intersection. It will stay. And it will be better than it ever has been.
So just to clarify, on Monday, what will we be voting on on Monday?
So a not to exceed amount.
A not to exceed amount. Got it.
As far as the engineering expenses for, uh, the city of Sagatuck specific items. And then you'll also have a time and material list in as far as like the engineering expenses, which really doesn't matter, because you'll have a not to exceed amount.
Okay.
And then we'll come back to, and if we ever have to exceed the cost that you, the council will approve, it will come back before you. So that's the purpose of the not to exceed amount.
Any other discussion on this agenda item?
I will just say, I have been privy to the emails between our attorney, Chris Patterson, and, and Ryan, and, and the team, and, and CA2, or whatever they are.
C2AE.
A2A2. And, um, you know, our legal team is doing a great job of making sure that the contract looks very good.
Yep.
Everything I've seen, and I'm not a lawyer, makes me very comfortable in what's being put together, because there's been a lot of back and forth. You know, I mean, we're paying legal fees, but it's well, it's money well spent to make sure that that contract looks very good and is very protective of the city's interests, so.
Okay. Anything else on this agenda item? Go ahead.
My only question would be, and I'm sure this is accounted for, I just would hate if I didn't bring it up. Sounds like we have a budget of $60,000, 50, 50,000 committed here, 10 to 15 was brought up earlier, in addition that we're pulling out of the, the VPW. Um, sounds like we're running up, you know, really close to our budget. I'd be curious to make sure that, you know, there aren't any, that either one, that this money was earmarked for this in the budget, or, um, you know, just making sure that we're not going to run into anything like we can't pull the Christmas lights down or something, because we don't have, I don't, you know, like, just with, with how close it is to the exact amount of money we have left.
Right.
Like, just making sure that that's not going to be an issue. That's just my concern.
Madam Mayor and Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the question, Councilman. So there, there, there's, there's no worries there, um, in my professional opinion. You still have $60,000 to work with through the Department of Public Works budget for this project specifically. If you do run into an issue with finances, maybe the traffic signalization or something gets a little more complicated, everything comes back to you as a council, and you have reserves. And you have like four, 4.5 million dollars in reserves that you can utilize to assist with, with the project if needed.
Great. Thank you.
We're, we're going to be able to take those Christmas slash holiday lights down.
All the way around.
Right.
Oh, wait, what's that? Leave them up all year?
They're white, they're fancy. Russ, one more.
Yeah, one last question. This is being presented to the three municipalities. Is there any discussion? Has there been any discussion with the Village of Douglas, city of the Village of Douglas, and the township in terms of their support for this, too?
This part, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I hear the question. Sorry, Mr. Gardner.
We're all signatories to this resolution.
Yeah, actually, I think there's a few more details I've worked through with this already existing resolution. I do believe the city village of Douglas had signed this. I think the township has a few questions, but they're like really minor.
Okay, so you've never had contact with the manager and the town.
We, we talk, yeah, when we, we have meetings, we, we all speak as a group.
All right. All right, let's move on to, um, item six E, poverty guidelines. It's on page 19.
Madam Mayor, you have, um, our Deputy Assessor on line?
All right. Uh, thank you. Don, if you want to go ahead.
Good evening, council. How, how is everyone doing tonight?
Great, thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Well, I'm going to make this very, very easy and try to get you out before dinner's actually burned. The poverty guidelines is a state mandatory guideline in which we adopt for a resolution every year. It is an annual event that we do. And what it entails is it has several levels of qualification and an asset test that's, uh, uh, attached to it. Currently, we, we actually haven't had a poverty exemption, uh, awarded in Sagatuck. In fact, I don't even, I, I, in my tenure here, I, I don't remember us even having an application. However, we do want to have it out there and offered, just in case there is someone that could take advantage of the uh, exemption that, uh, we, we, we put through the assessing office. Um, so what you would be voting on is to adopt the, these are the state guidelines. These are not specific to Sagatuck. But, uh, we, we compiled it in such a way that, uh, it meets all of the state guidelines and approvals and MCLs. And, um, there's not much else to be said about it.
Does anybody have any questions?
Well, have, is there any assistance provided to people who need to fill this out and complete it?
That's a great question. I would be 100% able to help anybody in a system in getting that done.
Wonderful.
That's great.
Any other questions? And how does this get out to the public, Jamie?
It is on, it'll be on the website under the assessing.
Okay. Is it anything that we have to have in the newspaper or any? Do we have to have any additional communication?
We do not. Once it is proved as a resolution, uh, we will, uh, put it on our website. I think that's what Jamie just said. I'm having a little trouble hearing. Sorry, audio is pretty bad. On my end. Uh, but we do put it on the website. Uh, we have conversations obviously with taxpayers constantly about it. You know, as far as advertisement, it really doesn't get the advertising that the beautiful lights downtown do, but, um, it, you know, I do, I do field quite a few questions, um, on a weekly basis in regards to exemptions and what's available to the taxpayer. So we do, you know, we have those conversations as needed.
So, so taxpayers who would qualify for this would know that it's available? Is that true?
I can tell you that's probably, that I would, I would tell you that's probably true. Um, and I think, to be perfectly frank, I think the reason we haven't had any applicants in the city of Sagatuck is truly because the asset test alone would be difficult for anyone to, uh, qualify for. So in that, you know, the, we usually steer people towards other exemptions that are out there, available to the state. And, you know, some people have taken advantage of those, but, um, the, the poverty, you know, it, 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 it's a, it's a difficult exemption. It's a mandatory exemption, and that's why we, we get a yearly solution for it.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
You bet. Everyone, have a great evening.
Thank you, you too. All right.
Thank you.
Item six F, council meeting dates. That's page 25. Jamie.
Oh, sure. This is housekeeping every year per Open Meetings Act. Uh, we have to post the, uh, council dates, uh, 10 days prior to the first, uh, council meeting of the new fiscal year. Per charter, your meetings are on the second and fourth Monday of every month. There's a list here. By resolution, you need to adopt that, so.
Okay. And I know Jamie had mentioned that some of these dates might have to change, but if we can.
But this is per charter, what your dates are for the year, and if you change those, then you do that.
Throughout the year. Okay. Any questions on these?
I have one quick question. So Christmas Day, obviously, we're supposed to have our other meeting. Are we able to sub out the, so we're able to sub out the, um, strategic planning session for that, even though it's not the next day after or whatever?
I actually, when I was mayor, I actually brought this up with Jamie and Ryan, um, because I saw it coming. And my proposal at the time, and once again, I'm open to whatever the mayor wants to do, was to have a very brief meeting on the 20th as our, because we're required to have two regular council meetings a year, to make the 20th our regular council meeting, and then immediately adjourn and go over to.
I was just working.
Planning session.
In the.
And cancel the 25th.
But in the charter, it says something like the next day after. Does it, do we have to have a motion to bypass that or something?
I'm sorry.
I think it says in here, it says, wait, it says, council should be held, then such regular meetings shall be held on the next following secular day, which is not a holiday. So can we do it on the 20th and not the 26th?
You know, it's funny, I thought I looked at it on the city website, and it wasn't worded that way. It's just whenever, I thought it was like, whenever, 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 practically, well, it could be. I, it's been a while since I looked at it.
I think we've spoke to legal about this before, and as long as there's two meetings a month, and you have four, right?
Correct.
Two regular.
Oh, okay.
Two workshops.
Yeah.
You have two minutes a month that it suffices. I think we reached on that.
All paid up. Okay.
They're all good.
Well, I, some could argue that the workshops don't really count as, as regular meetings. Some could argue, some could argue that. So I mean, that's why my proposal would be to have a very abbreviated city council meeting to, I think, comport with the charter. And then just adjourn to, I believe we're going to go to the SCA again.
Correct.
And, and, and have our, and have our, you know, priority settings, uh, session. So that was kind of my thinking, but I'm open, obviously, to whatever the mayor.
Yeah, I would, I would have thought with the strategic planning meeting, we can make that our second full meeting of the year.
And, and you can, we can advertise, and then Mr. Witty will jump in, but we, you, you you can advertise the meeting at the SCA and still qualify for your regular meeting.
We did that last.
Mr. Witty.
So that, just as to the question about what the charter requires, is to win that replacement meeting has to be, it says on the next following day, which is not a holiday, or on such other day as may be said by the council. So there is discretion to move that around.
Oh, okay.
So you don't have to come in here on the 26th.
Nice. All right.
And so, I mean, I don't know how we want to, how you want to handle it, Mayor. If you want to try to have an abbreviated meeting, we just walk the block, or if you just want to make that priority meeting, um, regular meeting, I don't, maybe, maybe council has no concerns either, why, or Jamie?
As long as, as long as we're okay with having the strategic planning as our other meeting, I don't know if we have to handle it any differently, other than, um, advertising.
Yeah, and last year we did that, and we, the public was there. It was a public meeting for them to attend, and we had a agenda for that, and agenda for strategic planning.
Right, so we broke it up into two, two sections.
Yeah.
Like one year, four year regular meeting, and then got into our strategic.
We did it all in one location.
So I would say that's what we should do. So Jamie, do I need to, um, have you do anything specific for that?
No.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? All right. Uh, on to six G, strategic planning survey used for previous years. This is on page 28.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
May I, please? Thank you. So I'm just going to read through the, uh, cover page here for a str- strategic planning resident survey. City council agreed to request a review of the citizens, citizen survey in preparation for their upcoming planning session. So what I attached into the packet, uh, is the previous year survey. And then we heard criticisms last year of the survey as being too simplistic. Some even called it lazy. The council can take the survey questions to an official vote if you want to on, on Monday. My position is that longitudinal data with maintaining similar questions year over year allows for benchmarking and comparable metrics. Number two is that open-ended questions, which is like, you know, this is the rest of your packet. I think we had 115 open-ended responses, which is amazing for the size of city. Actually glean the most valuable stakeholder input, in my opinion. Number three, overcomplicated or exhaustive surveys tend to lean towards a lower response rate. Just from personal professional experience, when I get a survey that takes me more than 10 minutes, I don't really want to do it. And so, yeah, the council can either, either take this up on Monday and have new questions, or they can keep the same survey questions. We serve at your pleasure.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we have to kick this off. I'm disappointed, well, not disappointed, but would like to have further discussion at Monday's meeting with council member Munsey, because I know he has some opinions about this. I do ask the manager why we would include that comment. Your staff has heard criticisms of the survey as being too simplistic and lazy. I'm not sure.
Oh, because we received that, Mr. Gardner, we received it from Mr. Munsey.
Yeah, I don't.
You don't remember it?
I do remember it. I'll let him answer as to what his thoughts were behind that. So I think there's a lot of discussion around this and 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 from my mind, and I talked with the mayor about this a little bit last night. I've talked with several fellow council members. I think the council really ought to take a step back and review those strategic goals. I'm not sure how those were initially developed. They were probably developed a couple of years ago. I'm sure there was a thought process behind. I think we've got a great foundation here. But I think that the city, as any other organization, changes and our community changes over time, the five goals in here, I think, should be reviewed, should be discussed at a planning session with a strategy, with someone to lead that, to say, yes, these are still appropriate, or no, they're not. Maybe there's others to replace them. And I think that's something that the city should do. I also think the city should be looking at a serious discussion regarding, kind of stepping back and saying, what are we actually planning to? You know, what is it the city is trying to accomplish? What's our mission? What's our vision? And then those strategic goals are meant to support that. And I don't know that we necessarily have that. At least I'm not, I, I don't. I'm not aware of it. I haven't seen it. I think that's something the community would really benefit from, and that would be a process we'd have to go through. I, I hope others are maybe understanding what I'm, what I'm asking or thinking that we need from the community. We should revisit these. And making sure that we're asking the right questions.
I, I mean, I, I appreciate the sentiment and it's a shame that council member Munsey's not here. But we have 10 business days between now and the twentieth. Frankly, I'd like to see this survey go out tomorrow or Friday. So the community has at least a week to respond. And so staff has at least two days on the eighteenth and the nineteenth to compile what we get in from the community. So I, I, I'm, I'm sorry that my colleague's not here, but this kind of goes back to the question of, you know, we're all busy people. We all have lots of meetings and boards and commissions. And in fact, one thing I'll probably want to discuss a little bit at our priorities session is, is what we're doing with these workshops and, you know, how we can maybe higher grade these workshops so they're more meaningful. Maybe they'll be a little bit longer, but maybe we won't have as many of them, because I know staff is overwhelmed. You know, staff is very busy, council members. We had a very good discussion just a moment ago about how it's hard for us all to keep track of this stuff. So I think I would get this survey out as it is out of this week at the latest, because that gives the community the most time to respond to it. That, that would be my recommendation. And the way I see it is I see these sessions, these facilitated sessions more as checking on our priorities that we've identified through the survey. And it's, 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 it's a, it's a check for, for the year forward. It gives us a chance to make sure if we're on the right track. It gives it a chance, it gives a chance for staff to participate, us to give staff a little course correction if need be. But basically, then let them go. Typically, we've spent a couple hours at these priority building sessions, looking at the, at the survey results. I, I, I think it's far too ambitious to think we can set up mission, vision, values and put up a, I mean, I just, I think about what's going on with the tri-community master plan. I mean, that is a multi-meeting, multi-day effort. And I don't see us accomplishing that on the twentieth.
We've been working on the tri-community for months now with a steering committee and multiple, yeah, I can't imagine how this could be pulled together between now and then.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mayor.
Sorry, Mr. Witty. Sorry, no, I mean, I had a couple other things, but no, I'm good.
Oh, you sure?
I was just going to say I would get the survey out. Just to recap, I would get the survey out this week as it is. And I would, yeah, I mean, I would, I would close it out probably the Friday before the Wednesday meeting on the twentieth, so staff has some time to, to compile if that's enough time for staff.
Yeah, and we need to get it to the consultant too. The survey results.
Yeah, and we will share that information. And so, I mean, something that RC and I talk about is, you know, surveys. The most, as I mentioned in my cover page, the most valuable information is kind of these open-ended questions, right? And we're, we're, we're a small city, right? And you know your constituents. And when you get these open-ended responses, I think council's intelligent enough to know how to use that data. And surveys are, you know, always receive criticism. And so, I mean, I'll just mention some of the surveys that the city of Sagatuck has done this year, which is short-term rentals. Right? Which is no small feat. The parks, parks and recreation, five-year plan, which was a lot, a lot of effort put into that. And then waterfront development, right? So it's not like this is the only survey. You have tons of, in my opinion, a lot of citizen input already into kind of the direction that your stakeholders want to go into. And so I, I do believe that, you know, the survey that we have sent out in the previous years is, is important for strategic planning. But don't underestimate the amount of work that you have already conducted in this year. So I just want to remind you of the surveys that you have.
As far as the survey goes, do we have to vote on the survey language, or can we say, we all like this survey and we can get this out by Friday?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
In my opinion, this is an administrative task.
Okay.
But it was brought up that you all wanted to have a discussion on it. So that's what's happening at the moment. So I, I don't hear it. I know you really need a consensus, but it's up to you all.
I can gain that.
If I can feel
Yeah.
the vibe, then we'll take, then you have till Monday to like bring in new survey questions.
Okay. Okay.
I, go ahead. So I, I, the verbatims were great. I mean, I think my understanding what the priorities this year, the, the short-term rentals, the waterfront came through. If we were to add something, I would probably recommend a housing one so that short-term rentals and affordability and all of that fell into that, but I would be willing to bet all of my pets that that will come up in the, in the verbatims. You know, I think Russ makes good points in that I think, you know, longer term spending, you know, having a plan that gets our priorities makes sense, but it's not something I think we need to ident, I mean, I think this data will give us what we need at the strategic planning to know based on what we know already without this and then the verbatims. I think those will be really good guides. And I would, I would not want to not do it, even if it's not perfect, because I think that data will be really important when we meet. And it may be longer term, we think about what do we want our strategic planning process?
Sure.
To look, you know, to look, I mean, I think that's a discussion, but I don't think we're going to accomplish that now.
I think, I'll just add, I think the beauty of the open-ended question is, if, if you have, if there's enough time for, for staff and the consultant to look at it, and even the council can do it fairly quickly, if we get it in time, is you can, you can kind of see trends, you can lump things together. I think, you know, I, if I recall last year's effort, by looking at those open-ended questions, we were able to kind of say, okay, you know, most of this was around parks, you know, this, you know, it said, you know, we, this is why having a parks and public works committee is so important, because people are really passionate about the parks in all forms, you know, so. I, I think it, it's a pretty, it, it does look simple, but sometimes simple can be good.
And I think the council did, I mean, a lot of the verbatims have been addressed. I mean, bald head is, I know, getting a lot of attention that came up a lot. Short-term rentals. I mean, it, I think you all did a good job at getting at a lot of these issues.
Logan, go ahead.
I'm a huge fan of the work of the city in the survey administering in general. I think it's awesome to have data, obviously. And I saw that come online and have been a huge fan of that. I I've done quite a bit of survey work professionally myself. And I just have some quick slight tweak recommendation that I love to float. I appreciate Mr. Heiss's comments on maintaining the integrity of the survey year to year, so you can actually track against that data. I think that's really important. There is one thing that I don't see the, there's 10% of the, you know, votes for the first question were for other, and it says, please specify. I would love to see, I don't see the data for that in this packet. I would love to see what those were. Just because maybe there is something, there's a large area of some, you know, a category that they're seeing that we're, is not being represented in the survey. And I would say if there's any modifications that would be made to the survey, it would be possible, if there's sort of a consensus within that 10%, if there is something that there's been a gap, 20 people have identified that we should have as a possible priority, maybe that is kind of a way to vet in another option into this year's survey, but I don't see the need to like tear down all of those different categories.
Is that something you could tweak, Ryan?
Yeah, absolutely. I want to make sure I understand the question, though.
It was just of the others, I don't see the data for that. Is there consensus in those other, in that other category?
That's, um. Other, please specify.
Yeah, so question one, please check. Or no, sorry.
Nope.
Page twenty nine, I think you're looking at.
Oh, I'm confused. I'm confused.
Oh, that was where you live.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got my pages mixed up. I would love to see that question, though, in the, applied to the overall strategic and then carry out what I was saying, you know, kind of moving forward.
Like other issues that aren't addressed in the survey. And that's, that's kind of what the open-ended questions are for.
Are there any other specific goals, projects or action items you would like to see addressed in the coming year?
The, the distinction I would make there is that it's not a large, like, overall initiative, like, category.
Oh, because you're looking at like page thirty one, the strategic goals. And you would like another, you would like other?
Yeah, it's really more question thirty on Q, Q two. Because that's just, it's the same, it's the same sort of question.
Be considered number one priorities.
Another question that I would have would be, I would love, speaking of integrity of data, I think it's really important when it's tough, because you want to hear what people have to say, and you don't want to make people afraid to say anything. But I do think it's important that there's some sort of identification that can be stored for who is responding, not necessarily so we know who they are, but so we can try to track against. And I know it's hard to do when you're doing a survey. I know anonymity is really important, but someone consider a computer and fill out thirty of these things and skew what we prioritize in the city for the next year, which feels like a huge gap.
It's a good point. It came up with the short-term rental.
And I saw that as a problem with the short-term rental survey as well. So I would.
So we, yeah, but is there, so, I mean, so I think Mr. White's, Councilman White's point is like, are we able to scrub any duplicate?
I have to look at the program.
So there are other tools too that we could use, and I'd love to be a part of the process.
Okay, well, during.
Blurring that, but that's like a whole, that's a whole thing.
I'm really, I see, sorry, go ahead. Well, we're just, so this came during short-term rental, and we did our best. So what how did we do that exactly?
Yes.
Or do our best.
So Survey Monkey at least allows you, will provide IP address data depending on the, I think, the level that you have. So we were able to, to take a look at, you know, where their IP addresses showing up and duplicate at such a high level to where we're like, there's stuff in the box. Like, obviously, there multiple people at one house may have one IP address. They're taking the survey out of the computer, but if we were, I think we said it
It was six.
Four or five, yeah, so.
If you have IP address data, that's great.
Yep.
Yeah, really nice.
So I would just like to get to the point where, as far as this survey, are we good with this survey for this year?
Yeah, I guess, I, I know I stumbled at the beginning with the other, but I would add that to the larger priority.
The other, please specify would be to the strategic goals.
Yeah, because I feel like there's a gap between how specific the last question is and how broad the first question is.
Make sure we understand, page thirty, right?
Yeah, that's a good thing to do right now.
So add others, so it's going to be city organization, infrastructure, parks and rec, community engagement, collaboration and others?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, you know.
With a please specify, right?
Please specify. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Madam Mayor, great conversation. This is, the, I just have to say, I love the fact that this council is having discussion like this. It's, I love it. On the survey, I'm not supportive of the survey as it's currently structured. I think it's a couple of years since we've actually reviewed the strategic priorities. I think we should spend some time as a council discussing that. Probably on the twentieth is a good time to do that if we can get ready for it. I don't see the urgency in sending the survey out before that conversation. Especially since I personally have some questions about whether those are the right priorities for the city. And I'd love to hear from other council members about your thoughts about what the priorities of the city are. I don't see the urgency in getting the survey out to the public before that meeting on the twentieth. I, I, I and the comments, I love the comments. I read them with interest, just like everybody else did. There's some really funny stuff in there. And there's some comments that are, were not really strategic of nature.
But isn't, if I may, isn't the point of the strategic planning to have this data ahead of that meeting?
But the point I'm making is that what are we planning to? That's the question is, what are we exactly planning to?
Can I just make one? So one of the city's strategic priorities for this year was short-term rentals, and which was not on this list, but it was in the verbatims.
Right.
So I think if we, I, I really feel strongly we need to do the survey before we meet, because I think it yields good data, just as it did last year, where short-term rentals bubbled up in the verbatims, and so it became a priority. So.
So right now I've got Holly would like the survey to go out before our meeting. Helen.
For Friday. I mean, we have to.
Would you like it Friday or out after our Monday meeting?
I'd like it out, I'd like, I'd like it out Friday, because, you know, people need time, staff needs time to compile it.
You need the weekend.
We, we got 10 business days.
You need the weekend.
We got 10 business days.
So, okay.
And Logan.
And, you know, I mean, I want to know, before, before that meeting, I want to know if everybody hated the Fourth of July or hated, hated the occasion so much, I want them to say that in the survey, so then we can have a conversation of, are we going to do events anymore?
Right.
Are we not going to do that?
Yeah, I think it's so important to have that information before the meeting.
But once again, I, I think calling it a strategic plan is, is a bit of a misnomer. Really, it's priority setting for the year. And it's a sense check on, on, on existing priorities, you know? If suddenly everybody said and wrote down, hey, my cell service is great now, just forget about what we said the past two years about cell service. And then we say, oh, that's interesting. So.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have time for, at this point, I'm not opposed to, I like the idea of strategic planning, but having worked in the corporate world for 22 years, well, and now even at the state, that's an effort that takes months and months and months. You start, as you said, Russ, you start with your mission, your vision, your values. You start with all sorts of public meetings where you do the visioning and all this stuff. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I, I had to do these things in the corporate world, and it's, it's not something you can do in an afternoon meeting. You just can't. This is a priority exercise.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, city manager.
Thank you. So we had a similar, not you and I, but RC and I had a very similar conversation when it came to the short to, short-term rental survey. And the fact that, you know, the survey is, it's, it's a data point, right? And I already talked about this, the fact that it's a small city. Y'all know what's going on. And so the open-ended questions are the, the best responses that you can get. And then when we, when you all go into your strategic planning session, then you do categor, categorize like administration, infrastructure, parks and public works. And then part like, so then you prioritize, and that's kind of what city staff works on. But things change, right? And so some, some things leapfrog, but we do categorize things in a strategic way based on the council's opinions. And this kind of data is important. And so I would highly recommend that the council move forward with it.
Well, I think the consensus is we would like to see this survey out so we have results, we're able to look at those results by the time we meet for our strategic planning session.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just.
I'd like to wrap this up.
Yeah, thank you. Just to the twentieth, do we have an agenda for that meeting yet? Number two is, are we going to have a, into these comments and the work that the city's done over the past 12 months, are we going to have a revisit of what we accomplished over the past year? There's a lot of things on that list that.
That's what we've done in the past.
Yes. So I would expect a formal report of that from either the consultant or from the city to say, here's what we've gotten done, here's what we didn't get done.
Yes, sir.
Because that can help guide to.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah. So, Mr. Gardner, you have been involved, I think, in two.
Two of them, yes.
Yep. So you may or may not recall that that's exactly what we do. We go over the previous, previous years' strategic plan, check off what we accomplished and that's, that's what we do.
So I think our guidance then would be for Jamie to put the survey out with the one tweak that we decided, Jamie, you know, the one tweak that we're talking about, and I think we all agree that that would be good to have on page thirty.
I really appreciate council member White's tweaks. I mean, I think they're simple, simple things.
Yeah.
Doesn't.
Easy thing to fix.
It allows the data, as you pointed out, it allows the data to say, stay the same in terms of being able to follow the same thing. Suddenly like, oh, there's different questions. So suddenly your graph goes, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate his insight. Yeah. So I, I appreciate his insights on that.
All right. Great discussion, you guys. All right. Um, if there's nothing else, I would like to go to public comment on anything. Anybody in the room would like to make public comment? Go ahead, Dan.
Obviously, I didn't have a lot else to do today. I just had, and listen to the short-term rental thing, I just, one, maybe it's, uh, included or assumed or whatever. But it's the first recommendation from the fire district, which is to have those fire inspections be annual. The part I hope is sort of implicit in that is the licenses for short-term rentals should be annual, not three-year deal, which I think if I did the math right, and it was a while back, out of the 375, is that what you charged for three years? What's the license fee? 300, 350. I think you net something like 60 bucks out of that, because the rest goes to the fire district for the, for the once every three-year inspection. Gets to your point as well, in terms of getting the costs nailed down. And, and the fire, just speaking for them, and the fire district, those, the numbers that are being charged now may be a third or fourth of what the actual costs are. And the board and the fire district, I mean, as one of them, is pushing hard on, we do the same thing. Get the costs for the fire district's inspections, the certification training that's required for those people to be able to do those inspections, the costs on the equipment. I mean, every single cost, that's only fair.
Yep.
Because if the short-term rental person isn't paying for it, that means I'm paying for it and that's bullshit. So.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, no one else is in the room, so if there's anyone online, Jamie, with their hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
No one? Okay, so council comments, um, if we could start with Holly this time.
Great to be here. That's it.
Okay, Russ?
I will keep this very brief. I really appreciate this discussion. I am really pleased by the changes that seem to be taking place in terms of open discussion. And my council member Dean's comments about maybe making these more, more efficient or however we're going to do that. Those are the discussions I want this council to have. So I really appreciate this and I appreciate the interaction. Thank you. Two is, um, when it comes to the Monday council meetings, I'm thinking about the public. So we have a lot of great discussion here. We're going on, you know, probably close to, what, two hours of discussion? At the Monday council meetings, what we, what I've experienced is that we'll say, well, we discussed that at length at the workshop. I think we have an opportunity there to better present this to the community, saying, yes, we had a long discussion, but here's what was discussed and kind of give an update. I think so, food for thought. Three is data points. I'd like to suggest and talk about Sagertuck 311. This has been looked at before, but we need to be able to better collect data from people reporting issues. This was brought up during the discussion about people maybe having an issue with noise at a property near them. There are tools out there that the city could buy that are fairly inexpensive to use that would allow people to easily report on their phones or a phone call or email to report issues. I think we should be making availability of that to our, to our community to make a better government. Thank you.
Helen, nothing at this time. Thank you. Okay. Scott?
Um, yeah, I, I would echo those comments about the council meeting. Sometimes our workshops do feel like dress rehearsals for the council meeting. So I'm hopeful, maybe, maybe it can't be on the 20th, but in the near future, I would maybe like, I mean, I, I know we have a statutory requirement to do two regular meetings, which I like. But maybe we should look at, you know, maybe it's a deeper dive workshop, maybe it's a longer workshop once a month, or maybe once a quarter. And maybe we, we, we start to think about it that way. And, you know, once again, I, you know, we are extremely transparent as a city. I mean, most cities in this town, I mean, in this area, don't have Zoom, you know, they, they, you, you, if you got to show up to even know what's going on. So, I mean, we're doing a lot of things to make our government transparent and more accessible to the public. But sometimes maybe they're not getting the benefit, nor are we, or, or a staff at some of these workshops where it is just a dress rehearsal for the council meeting, and then we have to make a throwaway comment like, come on, we already discussed this, guys. You know, and once again, I mean, I'm all about making this available to the public and being more transparent. But, you know, you do have to expect if you're going to participate in government, that you've got to show up. And that goes, that goes for our constituents too. You know, I, I hate to sound blunt about it, but you know, you, there's only so much we can do if people aren't paying attention. And it's particularly difficult in this town, uh, because a lot of people are snowbirds and they, and they, they, you know, they only really want to engage when there's something that's right in their line of sight. You know, things like people's drinking water pipes, things like that. They don't really think about until the water doesn't come out of the tap, or they get a note from Eagle saying that there's lead in their water. So I think those things are all important. And one, um, one final thing, um, the saga, talking about signs, uh, the Sagertuck sign, I put it back together last night, so.
Nice.
Oh, it's put together.
Well, if you take a closer look, you will learn that, um, there's a reason why I'm not a carpenter by.
Some bubble gum in there and.
And Scott Herbert will not be hiring me to do any, any type of woodworking or carpentry. Uh, but to answer the question, I think everyone was concerned about it. Um, it was a car accident.
Oh.
Yeah.
I found pieces of the car.
Oh.
And it was a car leaving Sagertuck.
Okay.
Leaving Sagertuck, crossed the lane on Holland Street, hit a tree, took their mirror off. So if you've seen a silver vehicle missing a silver mirror on its driver's side, that might be, that might be a tip.
Wow.
Um, but that individual is very lucky, um, because another six inches to the left and, uh, their car and possibly their body would still be there. Because that's, they literally missed the post that holds up that sign by six inches.
Okay.
But, um, yeah.
Thank you.
Wow.
All right, Logan?
Um, just a thank you to the short-term rental task force for the, what was reported on in the packet. It's clear they took a lot of effort to put that together and looking forward to seeing what comes out of that. It's really nice.
Thank you. Uh, the only thing I had is, uh, you know, obviously we, uh, put together that parade that happened. And, um, it was a short two-week turnaround for the people that jumped in. And I really appreciate staff and the fire department and the sheriff's department, uh, making some last minute tweaks on the parade route. I really do appreciate that. I'll be sure to thank everybody on Monday as well. But at this point, uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Adjourn.